Under normal circumstances, I would say good morning, but good afternoon, everybody. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum is pleasant here today at City Council. And council will now come to order. Members will take their seats, visitors will retire to seats outside the rails before the proceeding will begin. And I would ask all those presentants to please set your phones on silent or vibrate as to not interrupt or disturb any kind of council business that we partake today. Today, giving our invocation this morning, this afternoon, is the Chair recognizes Dr. Kevin Johnson of Dare Image Church, Imagine Church. He is here today with the guests, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, and I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
God, give us leaders. A time like this demands strong minds, great hearts, true faith, and ready hands. God, give us leaders whom the lust of office does not kill, leaders who will represent the rich and the poor, leaders who will work for the people and not the special interests, leaders who will ensure that no child is left behind. And God, give us leaders like Horace Mann, that great advocate of public education who once said, "Let us not be content to see and wait and see what will happen, but rather give us a determination to make the right things happen." When only 50% of our children are graduating from high school, God, we need leaders. When gun violence and murder is on the rise, give us leaders. When schools are crumbling and lead poisoning and asbestos is in the air inhibiting our children from learning, God, give us leaders. And when the national party politics becomes more important than the people, God, give us leaders. Be now with our City Council, guide them, lead them, direct them, so that the policies that they will create will be for the benefit of Philadelphians and not the special interests. This is our prayer of God this day. Amen.
It's your thanks to Reverend for his invocation. Today, council will now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting, Thursday, November 21st, 2019. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 21st, 2019 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting, Thursday, November 21st, 2019 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the Journal is approved. The next order of business will be the request of leave of absence, and the Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair thanks the Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the minority, there's no request for leave of absence.
Chair thanks the gentlemen. We will dispense of our regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining here today in our chambers. On behalf of all members of the City Council, I want to welcome you. I want to welcome you to enjoy and understand your experience here and as we do our council business. And we appreciate you taking the time out and to attend as we continue to do our affairs. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Councilman Johnson will present a resolution honoring Jeffrey Knuckel, who will be... Those who are joining him today, please approach the podium. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, Councilman Dom, Councilman Squiller, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Jones. And Councilman Green.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, good afternoon, everyone. At least that means we are definitely doing the work of the people. I want to take a moment while the staff and team from SEPTA come around to the podium. Today is truly an honor and a privilege to recognize a gentleman for his leadership in leading an organization that has a transformative impact on us being residents here in the city of Philadelphia. You know, it was some time ago when I was part of an organization called City Year, City Year Philadelphia, and it's an AmeriCorps program that was created by my former president, Bill Clinton. And while I was serving in this organization, they had an outstanding partnership with SEPTA. They provided free transpasses for young people to engage in community service all throughout the city of Philadelphia as well as in the schools. While I was in the City Year, we had a conference in Cleveland, Ohio. And I remember one evening, myself and my fellow corps members were out and about in the town, just enjoying ourselves, and when it was time to leave, we missed our bus. And what I learned in Cleveland, in a location called The Flats, once we missed that bus, there were no other buses coming. And I developed a great appreciation, a greater appreciation, for a body known as SEPTA here in the city of Philadelphia. Because in South Philadelphia, we have the 17, we got the 2 bus, we got the Broad Street L, we also have the 29, the 79, the 7. So we have about five to six different ways and means in which we can go to and from our neighborhoods. And so I truly appreciate the work that SEPTA has done. And sometimes we take it for granted, because sometimes we have to raise a little fear once in a while, but nevertheless, we have the number one rated, the number one transportation company, not in the city, not in the state, but in the country. And that's here in the city of Philadelphia. And that's under the leadership of Jeffrey D. Knuckel. But also, I want to acknowledge under his leadership, the great strides and improvement around diversity, inclusion. Oftentimes here in the city of Philadelphia, we see trains going up, we see all types of development, but the people you see working on those sites, the people you see getting those contracts, does not always reflect the people here in the city of Philadelphia when it comes to diversity and inclusion. I can attest, if you research the numbers of SEPTA and their professional services contracts and their initiatives and where they're engaging and getting people to come to the table to participate, and the contracts and the construction projects, and most importantly, professional service contracts that are under their purview, this is an organization that steps up to the plate all the time to make sure that they're engaging in diversity and inclusion when it comes to moving the city of Philadelphia forward. So I want to thank Jeffrey Knuckel for his leadership. I want to thank him for his service to the city of Philadelphia. Every time I call him, he's always there, but most importantly, he's one of the few organization leaders that actually comes and meets me without me calling him. I just want to give you an update, Councilman, on where we're at. And that's called transparency and accountability. And so I want to thank Jeffrey for all his hard work and dedication. Honoring and recognizing Jeffrey D. Knuckel on the occasion of his retirement as the 10th General Manager of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, otherwise known as SEPTA. Whereas Jeffrey D. Knuckel is a registered professional engineer with an advanced degree in civil engineering and has served as an employee of the Southeastern Transportation Authority for 31 years. During his tenure, he progressed to a series of leadership positions before being named SEPTA's 10th General Manager in 2015.
And? And he walks it like he talks it. He went on a neighborhood tour, looked at some 100-year-old bridges, pointed out a punch list of everything he would do, and 99.9% of the things he pointed out and said he would do are done. So a man of his, a person of his word. Whereas, in addition to overseeing 9,500 SEPTA employees, Mr. Knuckel has focused on strategic management of capital resources. After passage of the Pennsylvania Act 89 in 2013, he launched an ambitious rebuilding the system program and a comprehensive capital investment strategy to address the maintenance, repairs, and upgrade needs of SEPTA's assets and?
Whereas Mr. Knuckel has also made safety a focus and actively solicited participation by customers and employees. Notably, under his leadership, SEPTA implemented the federal positive train control mandate ahead of deadline. SEPTA was recognized this year for the success of that implementation with an award from the American Council of Engineering Companies and?
Whereas, Mr. Knuckel is also steward at the Sustainability Program at SEPTA. The program includes conversion of bus fleets to hybrid and fully electric vehicles, storm ward and management installations, solar panel installations, and energy-saving infrastructure upgrades. SEPTA also has entered into a long-term agreement to purchase a fifth of its electricity from a dedicated solar farms and will become the first major transportation agency to use solar technology to reinforce power for its commuter rail signal system. And whereas, Mr. Knuckel is also focused on building bridges between management and employees. He has signaled that focus through the GM Employee Shadowing Program, which has allowed him to engage with frontline employees and learn all aspects of SEPTA operations and?
Whereas, Mr. Knuckel also distinguished himself for his role in the Innovative Hub of Hope Project. For that project, SEPTA, the city of Philadelphia, and Project Home partner to construct a homelessness engagement center in Philadelphia's suburban station. He continues to work with Project Home Executive Director Sister Mary Scullion to fundraise and support of the center and?
I too want to seize this only moment to lift up Mr. Knuckel. I have sat in meetings at Councilman Johnson's roundtable and appealed to the leadership on how important it is for leaders to grow leaders. And Mr. Knuckel has heard the call that we need to do better when it comes to giving young people, promising young people, promising young people with credentials to come to SEPTA so that they too can grow their careers. That should not go unrecognized. Whereas, in addition to serving as SEPTA's General Manager, Mr. Knuckel also serves in a number of other leadership positions. In 2018, he was appointed by Governor Tom Wolf as the Pennsylvania Voting Member of the Northeast Corridor Commission for which he chairs the Operations and Performance Committee. Moreover, he serves on the boards of the American Public Transportation Association, the Pennsylvania Public Transportation Association, the Transportation Learning Center, and the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. He has also been recognized by a number of regional, national, and international organizations for his leadership, including Women's Transportation Seminar International, March of Dimes, the American Council of Engineering Companies of Pennsylvania, and the American Society for Civil Engineers Philadelphia.
Let me thank him for his work with homelessness and also on every project that we've been involved with, where a community is nearby, whether it be installing fences, fixing up yards, doing shrubbery, planting. He's gone the extra mile and invested their money to help our neighborhoods be what they can. He did so much, I was afraid to tell it. Said, "I can't afford to lose this," but he's a special person and we are very grateful. And whereas, SEPTA Public Transportation System is an indispensable asset to the city of Philadelphia and the greater Philadelphia region, Mr. Knuckel's stewardship of that system is a testament to his professional dedication and acumen, and it merits recognition on the occasion of his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore be it.
Resigned by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Jeffrey D. Knuckel be honored and recognized on the occasion of his retirement as the 10th General Manager of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority. And on behalf of the members of the City Council, we would like to say congratulations to Mr. Jeffrey D. Knuckel.
The Chair now recognizes Mr. Knuckel for remarks.
Good morning, Majority Leader Heenan, Chairman Johnson, and members of City Council. Thank you for your kind words and this very special recognition. It is truly an honor to be here this morning, and I actually rode the 17 yesterday, all the way down to the Southern Depot back. Throughout my time as General Manager, I have enjoyed working with council to advance projects and service initiatives that support Philadelphia's success and the aspirations of all who live and work here. Thank you for your partnership. The vast majority of my career has been dedicated to maintaining the city transit infrastructure, starting as an entry-level structural engineer through my time leading the Engineering Maintenance and Construction Division. My focus has been keeping the heartbeat of the city running safely and efficiently. And that meant I lost a lot of sleep. Before the certainty of dedicated capital funding, we undertook a decades-long billion-plus-dollar effort to rebuild the L on both sides of Philadelphia, the East and West, an investment that will benefit the city for generations. Now, with dedicated funding and the support of City Council, we have been able to accelerate work on critical infrastructure needs throughout the city, including the recently completed 15th Street Station phase of the City Hall Station Reconstruction Project. We have also moved forward on station accessibility projects throughout the system. I have tried to be a man of my word, one of you said that, and I, Council President, if he was here, I was going to say, I'm pleased to report that the contract for the reconstruction of Susquehanna Dolphin Station will be going to the SEPTA Board in December. Also, in partnership with the city, we are undertaking a comprehensive review of our bus network and are working on strategies to reduce congestion that is undermining mobility on city streets. I have said many times that our region is the engine of the entire state and that SEPTA's service now and in the decades to come will have a profound impact on the region and the state's ability to thrive. Just in my time as General Manager, it was intense. We have supported the Papal Visit, the Democratic National Convention, the NFL Draft, and the Eagles Championship Parade. But as I look back over my 32 years, almost 32 years, at SEPTA, working with the city and Project Home to build the Hub of Hope is one of my proudest moments. I am so grateful for City Council's support of this initiative, and I'm eager to see the continued positive outcomes our efforts will deliver for those in need. Being SEPTA's General Manager has been the honor of a lifetime. I've had the privilege to work with and lead a dedicated workforce of 9,500 exceptional men and women. I may have provided the leadership, but they got the job done. My goal when I became General Manager was to leave SEPTA and the city better than when I started. I hope I have done that. Thank you again, Majority Leader Heenan, Chairman Johnson, members of council, and all from SEPTA who have joined me here today. This is a very special day, one that I will always remember. Thank you.
Council will stand at ease. At this time, the Chair will recognize Councilman Johnson, who will present a resolution to Julie Wertheimer. With Ms. Wertheimer and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. Joined by Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Ginn, also joined by Councilwoman Bass.
So it's always truly an honor and a privilege to, again, honor individuals who have made significant contributions to the city of Philadelphia. This young lady has been a leader in city government on a critically, a critical and key issue as it pertains to this city, and that's criminal justice reform, that's violence prevention around making sure that our young people don't have access to guns but have access to high-quality activities and alternatives to the street life. And so it's truly an honor and a privilege as the Chair of the Special Committee on Gun Violence in partnership with my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, who is the Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety, to honor Ms. Julie Wertheimer. So before I give the official remarks regarding the presentation, I would like to bring up Councilman Curtis Jones to also provide some remarks.
So can we pass a resolution stopping her from leaving? I mean, that would be truly appropriate. So Julie used to sit in the first row over there in the first part of her administration, just taking notes on everything, everything we said. And when she decided what she really wanted to do with her life, it was criminal justice reform. And if you look at Julie and her demure, demure manner, you would think jails, courts, police, you, right? Well, you would be grossly misjudging her. She went into prisons with a, with a, with a intention of reducing the population, which is down below 6,000 now. Forty-seven hundred from 9,000. But who's counting, right? And she went and traveled throughout the country, looking at best practices to bring back to Philadelphia. Sometimes when you're in these spots, you get municipal envy, meaning other cities are doing so much more in other areas and we feel less than. Once Julie sunk her teeth into this, she was tenacious enough to bring back results that resulted in closing a jail. Closing a jail. So we are going to miss her, but I heard she's going somewhere where there's a lot of money. And maybe, just maybe, she'll remember all of us.
And oftentimes, Kurt, you know, when we do this work in city government, a lot of times, we get to get up and do these presentations and we get, sometimes we get accolades, a lot of times, we get criticized, but on the good stuff that we get done, nine times out of 10, probably 99.9 times out of 10, it's the staff that's behind the scenes, moving the agenda forward, making sure our visions and our plans are executed. And that's the work that Julie has done on this very critical issue of criminal justice reform. So we just want to say thank you, and we appreciate your hard work and your dedication. Probably kept some of my little cousins from State Road, but that's a different story. And the resolution reads, "The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor and recognize Julie Wertheimer for 11 years of dedicated and distinguished service with the city of Philadelphia. Whereas, on November 8th of 2019, Julie Wertheimer departed service as an employee of the city of Philadelphia after 11 years and?"
Whereas, Ms. Wertheimer departs as Senior Director in the city's Office of Criminal Justice in the role she coordinated with leadership across city government on policy and strategy initiatives relating to criminal justice. Her most notable accomplishment, most notable, included helping to lead a successful attainment and implementation of a multi-phase of the Safety and Justice Challenge grant from the MacArthur Foundation. During her tenure, the city jail population decreased substantially, a lot, enough to close an entire facility in the infamous, infamous House of Corrections. In her work on criminal justice, she also spearheaded the city's participation in initiatives including the National Forum for Youth Violence Prevention, and in addition, served in the city as the area, in the area of public safety and criminal justice. Ms. Wertheimer served as Assistant Budget Director and?
Thank you, Julie. Whereas, Ms. Wertheimer gained the esteem and affection of council during her tenure. She served as a knowledgeable and responsive resource for council members and staff as they engaged with criminal justice and public safety issues. In recognition of her leadership and expertise, she was appointed to Council's Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform and?
It's been so great to work with you, Julie, especially on juvenile justice issues. Thank you for being such a great partner. Whereas, Ms. Wertheimer completed both undergraduate and graduate studies at the University of Pennsylvania, she received a BA in Diplomatic History and an MPA from Felsin- Pennsylvania, she received a BA in Diplomatic History and an MPA from Fels Institute of Government and...
Julie's going to take her state, her work to a national stage, and because of her work, she's going to amplify the work that we're doing here in Philadelphia, and we will forever be grateful for that service and look forward to many, many more things. Julie is a resident of Center City, an engaged citizen. She participates in her neighborhood organization. She has been always a strong advocate and concerned on issues of neighborhood concern.
And whereas for all of the reasons above, Ms. Wertheimer will be missed among the ranks of city government, nevertheless, this body fully expects that she will represent Philadelphia capably and proudly as she continues her work on criminal justice at the national level, and then one day somehow will found a way to bring you back to the city of Philadelphia to do something even bigger.
Now, I want to sell your accomplishments short, but also, I remember working with you and Judge Lerner as we look at how we bring back gun courts. I remember reaching out to you with my policy person regarding issue of bail reform here in the city of Philadelphia. So again, we want to personally thank you for that guidance around those two critical issues. Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia does hereby honor and recognize Julie Wertheimer for 11 years of dedicated and distinguished service to the city of Philadelphia. We hereby extend the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body and offer our best wishes to her and her family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. On behalf of the city of Philadelphia, we want to say congratulations and we wish you much success.[707.43][707.43](APPLAUSE).
Chair recognizes Ms. Wertheimer.
Thank you, Councilman Heenan, Councilmember Johnson, all of the council members up here. I just want to say I'm extremely grateful for my time in the city, working with council members, past and present, and their staffs, as well as the entire team of folks that I was able to work with in the city and managing director's office, especially my team there, who I already miss, our partners, the courts, DA Defender, Police Department, all of the departments everywhere. This work wouldn't get done without everyone working together, and I'm just grateful to have been a part of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Council will be at ease. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take a moment. We've had a lot of recognition of things that happen to our, our young people that aren't all good. We looked at the news yesterday and saw a 22-year-old with her seven-year-old son who got shot in the foot. Thank God they're doing well. But I do not want for the media to believe that the only thing that happens in our respective neighborhoods are bad things. I want to recognize a group of young people who have come down today. They're from the Deroff School, and they are being mentored by the Renegade Group, and we want to welcome them to see city government up close and personal. And the Deroff School is in the 4th Councilmatic District. Please rise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanted to recognize a group that's here, and they've been working very hard on the whole issue of fighting youth tobacco and vaping use, and they're here to hopefully see bills that Councilman Jones and I and others have, are introducing today. So if I could ask the Youth Advocacy Institute people to just stand up for a second, please? Thank you for coming.
The next order of business will be communications. The chair now requests that the Sergeant Arms deliver the message from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read the messages from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on December 4, 2019, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on November 14, 2019, and that on December 4, 2019, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on November 21, 2019. And I am submitting here with the consideration of your honorable body a resolution reappointing Kevin Mickles to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District, and a resolution reappointing Howard Wurzak to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District, and a resolution appointing Carol Watson to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing Clayton Mitchell to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution appointing Greg Muller to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1853 East Ontario Street located in the 1st Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1703, 1707, 1711, North 55th Street located in the 4th Councilmatic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2166 North Franklin Street located in the 5th Councilmatic District, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Point Breeze Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 1324 through 1332 South Capitol Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Haddington Urban Renewal Area, unit number one, identified by house numbers and street addresses as 5508 Havreford Avenue, 5510 Havreford Avenue, 5512 Havreford Avenue, and 5514 Havreford Avenue. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract, redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3601 through 3615 Havreford Avenue, 3623 through 3637 Havreford Avenue, 3603 through 3627 Mount Vernon Street, 622 through 624 North 36th Street, and 628 through 634 North 36th Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Model Cities Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1532 North Marshall Street and 1543 North 7th Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. Mr. Decker, would you read any other communications that were sent up from the mayor?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Vonnell Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one resolution this morning. I'd like to be recognized for brief comments after this introduction.
Thank you, Councilman. See, see you got my flowers.
Yes, absolutely, and the color is what? Your favorite, red and white.
There you go, there you go.
A privileged resolution recognizing the extraordinary contributions and tireless efforts of the current and former staff members of the Office of Councilwoman Vonnell Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. John C. Maxwell once said, and I quote, "The truth is that teamwork is at the heart of every great achievement," end quote. This morning, Mr. President, I found it appropriate, timely, and in order that I take a moment to acknowledge my staff in the last 20 years. I started out as a staffer, as a legislative director for a state senator there in Harrisburg, made that hike for a year up and down the turnpike, and I learned then the value of staffers. So today, as I prepare to conclude 20 years of service with city council, I offer this resolution to honor the extraordinary members of my staff who have served Philadelphia with distinction. It is no secret that I value excellence, in fact, I demand it, and hard work, because to be an African-American woman in this business means that you have to walk on a tightrope backwards with high heels on, blindfolded, always getting it right. And so through this resolution, I am proud to recognize their efforts and formally enter every name of every single staffer into the city council record. With that, I want to acknowledge my family, who are here, two sisters representing the family, my daughter who's taking a law exam as we speak, my former staffers, my Delta Sigma Theta sorority sisters, the village moms, the travel crew, and former Danko dolls. If you all stand so that we can say thank you.[1348.42][1348.42](APPLAUSE). Three sisters here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good? Good? Thank you. That will be on today's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President. Today I introduce one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Renee Chanel Fatah on the release of her new film, "In Our Right Mind: Alzheimer's and Other Dementia's: Impact in Communities of Color."
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3601 through 3615 Havreford Avenue, 3623 through 3637 Havreford Avenue, 3603 through 3627 Mount Vernon Street, 622 through 624 North 36th Street, and 628 through 634 North 36th Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer nine resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Rules to hold public hearings to investigate how city departments coordinate with each other and with utilities to prepare and conduct street closures for street resurfacing and reconstruction projects.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Model Cities Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1532 North Marshall Street and 1543 North 7th Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2166 North Franklin Street located in the 5th Councilmatic District.
Also next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution appointing Greg Muller to the Board of Directors of the Center City District.
Wait a moment.
And a resolution appointing Clayton Mitchell to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution reappointing Kevin Mickles to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District, and a resolution appointing Carol Watson to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and a resolution reappointing Howard Wurzak to the Board of Directors, Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District.
Those resolutions for appointments shall be referred to committee.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I have one non-privileged and two, no, two non-privilege, one privileged resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Renegades Organization for their tireless pursuit in the mentorship of young men and assistance of senior citizens in communities across Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1703, 1707, and 1711 North 55th Street located in the 4th Councilmatic District.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Haddington Urban Renewal Area, unit number one, identified by house numbers and street addresses as 5508 Havreford Avenue, 5510 Havreford Avenue, 5512 Havreford Avenue, and 5514 Havreford Avenue.
And that will also be on next week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one privilege and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring John Grady on the occasion of his retirement as President and CEO of the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation for 21 years of outstanding service to the residents and businesses of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain property located in the 2nd Councilmatic District, which should be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such property to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of the Point Breeze Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 1324 through 1332 South Capitol Street.
That will also be on next week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you. I have two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution appointing Eric Bodson to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
That will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmatic District.
That will also be on next week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Good afternoon, Council President. I have one privileged resolution and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Joan Ernie on the occasion of her retirement as Chief Executive Officer of Community Behavioral Health for her decades of service in the field of behavioral health.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the Occupational Safety and Health Administration to recognize secondary traumatic stress as a workplace hazard, recommended steps, recommend steps to address mental health injury as a psychological hazard in the workplace as they do with physical injury, and create a standard for secondary traumatic stress.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Warren "Pete" Musser and his contributions to Philadelphia's business and philanthropic communities.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Taylor from... A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Taylor from her 27 years of exemplary leadership and service in the youth development field in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you. That will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions, and once the titles are read, I'd like to just make brief comments.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the Mutter Museum's ambitious exhibition detailing the size, scope, and impact of the influenza pandemic in 1918, of 1918 in Philadelphia, and its historically significant research on the topic. And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the 90th birthday of Ronald P. Sandmeyer Sr. and his dedication to the Sandmeyer Steel Company and Northeast Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Thank you, Council President. In regards to the Mutter Museum, they have a wonderful display indicating the history and the tragedy of the Spanish Flu here in Philadelphia. It is largely forgotten now, but was significant in the fact that so many Philadelphians died. In the year of 1918, the month of October, 15,000 Philadelphians died. It was really a travesty. It should be remembered, and I would be remiss in also not saying that my cousin, Dr. Jeffrey Tobinberger, actually discovered the gene sequence that caused this terrible outbreak of the flu. Also, we have the leadership of the Mutter Museum here. If they could just stand for a moment to be recognized. And briefly, on Mr. Sandmeyer's 90th birthday, as the Chair of the Aging Committee, this is something that should always be celebrated, and I'd like to know the secret of how someone gets to be 90 years old, so I think it's right that this body recognizes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilmen. Those will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will for one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1853 East Ontario Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one privileged resolution and on your behalf, seven non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing December 9, 2019 through December 13, 2019 as Army Week in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Lloyd Remick to the Veterans' Advisory Commission. And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Charles Forsey to the Veterans' Advisory Commission, and a resolution approving the appointment of George Perez to the Veterans' Advisory Commission, and a resolution approving the reappointment of Jose Melendez to the Veterans Advisory Commission, and a resolution approving the reappointment of George Ginder to the Veterans Advisory Commission, and a resolution approving the reappointment of Anthony Boyle to the Veterans Advisory Commission, and a resolution approving the reappointment of Andre McCoy to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
Those seven resolutions just read about it, Chief Clerk. Will be on next week's calendar. Thank you very much. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports to the Committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of the Hold.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hold reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
To the President and the members of the Council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hold, which is referred Bill Number 190943, entitled in ordinance permitting Section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Homestead Exclusion, to increase the amount of the homestead exclusion. And Bill Number 190944 entitled in ordinance permitting Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by modifying the duration and/or amount of certain tax abatements, and by providing for periodic evaluation of the abatements authorized by Sections 191303 Subparagraph 2, 191303 Subparagraph 3, and 191303 Subparagraph 4. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, I returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 1904943 and 190944.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190943 and 190944. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules. Councilman.
Yeah. Thank, thank. I'll get it together eventually. Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports 16 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Rules, which is referred Bill Number 190553, entitled in ordinance establishing a new Chapter 172300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Community Benefits Agreements, and requiring community benefits agreements for certain high-impact projects or development projects to receive city support or financial assistance. And Bill Number 190853 entitled in ordinance approving the Eighth Amendment of the Redevelopment Proposal for the Point Breeze Urban Manuela area, being the area generally bounded by Washington Avenue, South 25th Street, Reed Street, the rear property lines of the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South Taylor Street, Tasker Street, South 25th Street, Moore Street, and South Broad Street. And Bill Number 190859 entitled in ordinance permitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14702 entitled Flora Area Height and Housing Unit Density Bonuses. And Bill Number 190866 entitled in ordinance permitting Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code and Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning, to revise certain provisions concerning building permits in the NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. And Bill Number 190889 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spring Garden Street, Lancaster Avenue, 38th Street, Hamilton Street, and 31st Street. And Bill Number 190890 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Chestnut Street, 45th Street, Ludlow Street, and 46th Street. And Bill Number 190891 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, 34th Street, Civic Center Boulevard, and University Avenue. And Bill Number 190893 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ogden Street, 40th Street, Parrish Street, and Preston Street. And Bill Number 190894 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Locust Street, 49th Street, Baltimore Avenue, and 58th Street. And Bill Number 190897 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Havreford Avenue, 42nd Street, Palatin Avenue, Market Street, and 46th Street. And Bill Number 190898 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cobb's Creek, Baltimore Avenue, 49th Street, Gray's Avenue, 58th Street, Springfield Avenue, and Cobb's Creek Parkway. And Bill Number 190902 entitled in ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 22nd Street, Market Street, 21st Street, and Ludlow Street. And Bill Number 190913 entitled in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by further providing with respect to uses permitted or prohibited in commercial districts. And Bill Number 190914 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by amending Section 14514 entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District. And Bill Number 190916 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Walnut Street, Front Street, South Street, and 8th Street. And Bill Number 190917 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Broad Street, Snyder Avenue, 7th Street, and Oregon Avenue. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of the 16 bills that were just read into the record by Mr. Decker.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of the 16 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 190848, entitled in ordinance permitting Chapter 193200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area, to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits. And Bill Number 190850 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Office of the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into one or more agreements with FIS Avant-Garde for the installation and maintenance of an information management system for use by the Treasurer's Office. And Bill Number 190911 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 13100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Water Sewer and Stormwater Rates, to provide for enforcement of prevailing wage provisions of the code that apply in connection with the receipt of charity water rates. And Bill Number 190935 entitled in ordinance authorizing the issuance from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds to provide funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Philadelphia, authorizing the mayor, city controller, and city solicitor, or a majority of them, to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, setting forth the purposes for which the proceeds of the bonds will be expended, providing for the maturities and for other terms and conditions, and for the form of the bonds. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190848, 190850, 190911, and 190935.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190848, 190850, 190911, and 190935. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, which is referred Bill Number 190436, entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of the parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Gerard Avenue, North 31st Street, and Zoological Drive, commonly known as 3400 West Gerard Avenue. And Bill Number 190892 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development all or a portion of a certain parcel, all or a portion of a certain parcels of land in and about the area bounded by University Avenue, Civic Center Boulevard, Hamilton Street, and 34th Street, for further conveyance, and authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement to lease back a portion of the property to the city. And Bill Number 190896 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by South 50th Street, Pentridge Street, South 51st Street, and Willow's Avenue for further conveyance. And Bill Number 190942 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into an amendment to a lease agreement with Saint Agnes MOB for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 1930 South Broad Street. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, as to permit the first reading of this day, Bill Numbers 190436, 190892, 190896, and 190942.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190436, 190892, 190896, and 190942. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports 25 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 190555, entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines engraved on a portion of City Plan Number 270, by placing on the city plan Sigma Way from Urdrick Street to Takawana Street, northeast of Van Kirk Street, and Takawana Street from Van Kirk Street to Sigma Way, northwest of Urdrick Street under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the city of the beds of said Sigma Way and Takawana Street. And Bill Number 190557 entitled in ordinance authorizing the paving of Sigma Way from Urdrick Street to Takawana Street, and Takawana Street from Van Kirk Street to Sigma Way. And Bill Number 190644 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 122700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by changing certain boundaries and establishing new permit parking districts. And Bill Number 190645 entitled in ordinance authorizing James Harmon Doing Business KFN Holdings to construct, own, and maintain a proposed exterior stairway at 1248 through 50 North Front Street. And Bill Number 190743 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 15th Street from Moore Street to Mifflin Street, South 16th Street and Moore Street, 16th Street and Ritner Street, Bancroft Street and McKean Street, Ellsworth Street and South 23rd Street, Watkins Street and South 18th Street. And Bill Number 190745 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of South 17th Street and Passian Avenue, 17th Street and McKean Street, Carla Street and Moore Street, McKean Street and South 15th Street, South 24th Street and Snyder Avenue, Hick Street from Ritner Street to Jackson Street. And Bill Number 190826 entitled in ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales, by prohibiting vending on Market Street between 33rd and 34th Streets. And Bill Number 190851 entitled in ordinance authorizing Stephen Cook to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1301 through 05 North Howard Street. And Bill Number 190852 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Sheffield Avenue from Walker Street to Cottage Street. And Bill Number 190858 entitled in ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Worth Street. And Bill Number 190867 entitled in ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Elkhart Street. And Bill Number 190868 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Jasper Street and East Clearfield Street. And Bill Number 190899 entitled in ordinance amending Section 9212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled New Stands by revising requirements for sales, design, and advertising. And Bill Number 190900 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Pennsylvania Department of General Services to construct, own, and maintain a proposed set of non-standard bollards at 1503A through 11 Arch Street. And Bill Number 190901 entitled in ordinance authorizing MMB Contractors Incorporated to construct, own, and maintain hardscaped patios and accessible ramp and planter boxes at 2225 Spring Garden Street. And Bill Number 190903 entitled in ordinance authorizing Aspen Operations to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 741 North 23rd Street. And Bill Number 190904 entitled in ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Brown Street between North 22nd Street and Corinthian Streets, both sides. And Bill Number 190905 entitled in ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales, by allowing for sidewalk sales near the intersection of Cotman Avenue and Bustleton Avenue. And Bill Number 190910 entitled in ordinance amending Bill Number 050670 entitled in ordinance granting permission to Center City ERUV Corporation in order to demarcate the boundaries of a Center City ERUV district to construct and maintain clear nylon cord and other ancillary facilities, including a maximum of 10 poles long over and in. long over and in certain public rights of way and city streets to modify applicable boundaries. And bill number 190915 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number one ninety-five by striking from the city plan and vacating a dead-end portion of Cumberland Street extending from Beach Street to a terminus southeastwardly therefrom. And bill number 190918 entitled an ordinance authorizing Casia Massimo to own and maintain an existing exterior building ramp at twenty-seven twenty-three East Cumberland Street. And bill number 190936 entitled an ordinance authorizing Rika Patel, owner and operator of the newsstand located on the northwest corner of Thirty-first Street and Market Street, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the northwest corner of Thirty-first Street and Market Street for the purpose of supplying electrical service to the newsstand. And bill number 190938 entitled an ordinance authorizing Neil and Linda Pacrina, owners and operators of the food truck Linda's Car, located at the northeast corner of Forty-third Street and Woodland Avenue, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the northeast corner of Forty-third Street and Woodland Avenue for the purpose of supplying electrical service to said food truck. And bill number 190939 entitled an ordinance submitting Section nine two oh five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by providing an exception to the vending prohibition encompassing the vicinity of the intersection of Lindbergh Boulevard and eighty-fourth Street. And bill number 190941 entitled an ordinance authorizing Charles Peruto, Doing Businesses' Peruto Development, to construct, own, and maintain a proposed exterior stairway at sixteen forty through forty-two Fitzwater Street, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of the twenty-five bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the twenty-five bills that were just read into the record by the chief clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Keona Sanchez for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspection reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which is referred bill number 190713 entitled, an ordinance amending various provisions of Subcode P of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, entitled the Philadelphia Plumbing Code, by making additional additions, deletions, and amendments to the city's adoption of the two thousand eighteen edition of the International Plumbing Code as published by the International Code Council. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Keona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190713.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190713. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, to which is referred bill number 190824, entitled an ordinance renaming and designating the property commonly referred to as Mill Creek Park, located at forty-six fifteen Fairmount Avenue as the Lucian E. Blackwell Park in the city of Philadelphia. And bill number 190829 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Parks and Recreation Commissioner on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to lease from the School District of Philadelphia certain land and improvements known as a portion of South Philadelphia High School owned by the School District of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190824 and 190829.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190824 and 190829. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I like to be excused for personal matters, but I would like to be voted aye on all bills, resolutions, and amendments.
Thank you, Councilman. At least she'll be granted. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Public Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Welcome.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, to which is referred bill number 190864, entitled an ordinance amending Title Six of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code by amending Chapter six two hundred entitled Preventative Medicine to require the reporting of information related to substance use treatment, drug overdose treatment, and related information to the Department of Public Health. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190864.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the, to permit the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190864. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil for a report from the Committee of Technology and Information Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Technology and Information Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Technology and Information Services, to which is referred bill number 190912, entitled an ordinance authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city to enter into a multi-year contract with a provider of codification, editing, and marketing services to produce printed and electronic versions of the Philadelphia Code and related services and material, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190912.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190912. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a report from the Committee on the Environment.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on the Environment and Sustainability reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on the Environment, to which is referred bill number 190716, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter nine thirty-four hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Energy Conservation to provide for the benchmarking and reporting of energy and water usage data for certain buildings participating in the commercial property assessed Clean Energy Program and to make technical changes. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190716.
All right, you second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190716. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed or have had a first reading, they will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil at this time for motion regarding bills number 190914.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered to bill number 190914 at this time.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And again, the chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 190914. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. One sec.
Second.
Thank you. All of, all those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190914 has been amended, and bill number 190914 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Greenlee at this time for a motion regarding bills number 190944.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended so it's permit an amendment to be offered to bill number 190944 at this time.
All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Let the record reflect, there was one nay. And again, this one, right? Would you, Councilwoman, would you?
No, I just made it a motion to suspend the rule.
The ayes have it. And again, the chair recognizes Councilmember Greenlee again.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 190944. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. And bill number 190944 has been amended. Bill number 190944 as amended will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills in second, on second reading and final passage calendars. They are bill numbers 190601-A, 180457, 190787, 190746, 190451, 190718, 190762, 190763, 190825, 190554, 190710, 190742, 190744, 190827, 190862, 190788, and 190804.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passes calendars today. They are bill numbers 190947, 190948, 190949, 190950, 190952, 190953, 190954, 190955, 190956, 190101, 190610, 190638, 190784, 190811, 190830, 190715, and 190860. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we got to write this down. In addition to the bills being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are 190947, 190948, 190949, 190950, 190952, 190953, 190954, 190955, 190956, 190958, 190786-A, 190106, 190784, 190811, 190830, 190715, and 190860.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills that, and resolutions that are on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. We have a significant list today, so we will alter our timeline on our public comment session. You will have two minutes, so please shorten your testimony if you had made testimony that would have been prepared for three minutes. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the lights turn yellow, we ask that, I'm sorry, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Anyone that has not signed up to testify, and I'm hoping it's nobody else, if you haven't, you sign up to the table to my left. Mr. Decker, remember, two minutes as a result of the number of people and the volume that we have today. Mr. Decker, can you please? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Ed O'Donnell?
Hold on. Mr. Decker, hold on one second. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask to be excused from the rest of council, and from the remainder of the council session, and be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you. An amendment?
Eye on any amendments that are offered.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of amendments. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. At least she'll be granted. I'm sure she'll reflect that.
Ed O'Donnell?
Commenting on 190610. All right, good afternoon, City Council. I'm here to speak in favor of adopting the amendment on bill number 190610A. My name is Ron White. I'm the project coordinator for Mural Arch Trash Academy. We're an environmental justice program that aims to help the city meet its zero-waste goals. We're an environmental justice program that aims to help the city meet its zero-waste goals. In the, in the last year and a half, Trash Academy has gone to over 100 events and had in-depth conversations with more than 5,000 Philadelphians. We were mostly in neighborhoods struggling with litter and dumping, yet filled with caring and active residents. People have expressed an overwhelming desire to get plastic bags off of our streets. Trash Academy's role has been to engage the community through an education and awareness campaign to promote reusable bags as an alternative to harmful single-use plastics. We recently placed 25 billboards around the city featuring local community members with their favorite reusable bags. Promoting reusable bags will be key to the success of any legislation. We would like to see the city adopt our initiative as a citywide PSA campaign. We feel that it would be especially effective as it reflects the wonderful diversity of our city. I'd like to distribute this to the city council members. This is our PSA campaign. Is it possible to do that? Or should I wait? Thank you, thank you. As this year comes to an end, this city is in desperate need of some momentum around the issue of environmental justice. The situation with the PES refinery possibly reopening and the approval of a gas plant in the heart of Knightstown have many people deeply depressed and discouraged. While the plastic bag ban may seem relatively minor in comparison, the issue of trash and litter is one that many people in Philadelphia care very deeply about. I've been an environmental activist for about 10 years. Oops. Wow, that yellow light came on really fast. So I personally believe that a plastic bag ban would send a clear signal that Philadelphia does really care about protecting our environment and giving relief to our underserved communities. While this bill is not perfect, it is something we can build on and I hope that it is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. One, one thing I admitted with respect to public comment, your public comment must relate to a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the next name.
Michael Levy. Commenting on 190106.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, thank you for having me. My name's Mike Levy, Levy. I'm a professor of epidemiology at Penn, and I served on the council's bedbug task force. Bill 190106 is the first step in controlling bedbugs in our city. It is not a giant leap. It should provide some clarity of landlord and tenant responsibilities, and the amendments introduced today address some critical flaws in earlier versions of the legislation. But bedbugs are not only a landlord-tenant issue, they are a public health issue. Many suffering from bedbug infestations will still not be able to pay and afford safe and effective treatment. So I hope that council passes the bill before them, but I also hope that they continue to work to find ways to help people pay for safe treatments who otherwise would not be able to afford them. For a, if you treat a house today, you're preventing two infestations later on. I think, I think I very much believe that we can get rid of bedbugs from our city, or at least drastically reduce the harm they cause to our city, as long as we can make sure that we are treating these infestations very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Nicholas Sanders. Commenting on 190610.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Nicholas Sanders. I live in the Fairmont area of Philadelphia. Since 18, since 1987, I've been active as a volunteer and at times as a paid consultant for city and school district recycling programs. Also relevant to my testimony is my, most of my professional career has been as an educational researcher and program evaluator. So I do have some expertise in studies of specific programs. I'm testifying in relationship to 190610. I do support the ban on single-use plastic bags, but with a reasonable fee to cover the cost of other takeout bags. The argument that such fees penalize the poor should be seen as invalid and demeaning of people who experience poverty. Vendors are certainly savvy enough to bill the cost of any non-priced items such as takeout bags as an unspecified but additional, addition to the price of the products that they're selling. The poor do pay for whatever the bags they use, whether they see the fee or not. Like any other customer, they just cannot see it when it is built into the price of products that they buy. I believe that poor customers are generally resourceful enough to bring their own bags to avoid the fee if the fee is clearly identified and they know how to avoid it by bringing their own bags. Why do we need a study that would delay for some unspecified length of time a reduction of litter and damage to recycling machinery and diversion of recyclables to landfills and incinerators? Why do we need a study that will require vendors to incorporate the cost of alternative bags into the cost of their products? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sue Clements.
I'm not Sue, but I was hoping to, I have her testimony, I was hoping to.
Wait a minute, hold, hold.
Is that okay?
You're not, no. You have to, is your name, did you sign up?
I have her testimony and could, wanted to share it.
You have her testimony?
Yeah. She had to leave to go to work.
All right.
Is that okay?
You're, you're kind of jumping the line, but okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to do that. Sue is an RN at Temple Episcopal and in Kensington, Temple Episcopal Hospital, and I just wanted to share, I wanted to share her comments. In support of the bill number 190788 regulating hospital closure, this ordinance places much-needed requirements on hospitals preparing to close the facility and to ensure that the public is aware and informed and steps are taken to transition patient care to other facilities. She, she was going to be speaking on behalf of 175 nurses, healthcare professionals, and techs that are represented by our union at Temple Episcopal. We weren't directly impacted by this disorderly and abrupt closure at Honeman, but we thought it was outrageous and saw the lack of transparency and accountability, which left patients, the community, and workers in a desperate situation, which could have been prevented. We've seen the healthcare landscape change dramatically across the country, whether it's these real estate schemes like with Honeman where they were trying to ask, access the land value, or just nonprofit systems focusing on the most profitable specialized services. The current system just doesn't incentivize taking care of the poor, the uninsured, and opioid addicted. We're also concerned about the finances over at Temple, which has just chosen to sell off a profitable asset, which leaves them to care for a high concentration of poor uninsured parents, which is care that we think is, you know, patients, which we think is super important. We also represent workers in New Jersey, which already has these sorts of protections for public healthcare assets, so we just fully endorse this ordinance and think it's a great and much-needed protection. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Eric Santoro. Commenting on 190638.
Hi, I'm, good morning, good afternoon. I'm Eric Santoro. I'm here to talk about zoning bill 190638. I live at 4535 Pine Street. I've long been an active member of my community, including by serving two terms as the president of my local civic association and one of its delegates on the Crosstown Coalition. I recently learned that an amendment to the bill number 190638 is being proposed today that would upzone the Good Shepherd Church property located at 314 South 46th Street to RM1, although that amendment has still not been made available to the public or any of the neighbors. This is a property that is already the subject of an ongoing zoning dispute before the ZBA. The developer was scheduled to present the plans to the ZBA on August 14th, but asked for a continuance when he realized there was going to be significant community opposition at the hearing. Instead of, instead of continuing the hearing, the developer and the seller of the property requested zoning changes by ordinance. Simply put, the proposed amendment that is being offered today would allow the developer to bypass the EPA and the community oppositions and build their proposed and highly controversial development as of right. People are going to disagree about whether the proposed development is a good development or a bad one, but that's not the operable question for this body. Rather, the question today is whether the ongoing disputes about this property should be resolved during the, resolved through the normal channels of the ZBA, or whether there is something so special about this project that city council needs to step in and act and pass the rezoning ordinance. There's simply no compelling reason for council to cut off the normal zoning process and step in. First, the near neighbors, like myself, universally opposed this amendment to the ordinance. When it was first proposed, there was a wet ink, hand-signed petition that went around all the near blocks and universally, everybody opposed this, this project. A copy of the petition has been turned into the councilwoman's office, and a lot of the neighbors are here today. Second, the proposed amendment would be an inappropriate use of spot zoning. While spot zoning is not, is not per se improper, it's frowned upon and traditionally deserved for more appropriate, like, projects that would help the community. This is a pure for-profit sale to a developer who wants to build bigger. Okay, and, sorry, oh, sorry, I didn't see the red light was on. And just finally, I think the project is, process has been not transparent, and most people that are going to be impacted don't even know this amendment exists.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
George Gold. Commenting on bill number 190106.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gold.
Good afternoon. My name is George Gold. I'm a member of FAB, the Philadelphia Against Bedbugs. We have worked on the bedbug remediation bill for over four years. The bill 190106 is filed required the landlord to be responsible for the cost of bedbug remediation. However, at the committee hearing, we were blindsided by several amendments which effectively weakened the bill. This amendment included the provision, by the way, the bill was consistent with every ordinance and, at the state and local level and HUD regulations. The amendment in the committee included the provision that unless a tenant reported bedbug infestation within 90 days of moving in, they would have to share in the cost of remediation. We have since been working with the sponsor to try to undo the damage. We are now cautiously supporting the bill. The sponsor has put in some amendments such as changing the 90 days to one year after commencement of the lease, so that if the tenant reported the infestation within a year, the landlord would be fully responsible. In addition, if the tenant discovered bedbug infestation in other units in the building or in adjacent row houses and reported the infestation in the unit within six months, the landlord would be fully responsible. We are cautious about the time limit, the periods in the bill, which will lead to disputes and who gets to resolve them. We believe the original bill with our suggestion that the tenant pay for the cost of preparation was much fairer, and that the landlord pay for the remediation, that this was fairer and simpler. The sponsor has agreed to review this after a period of time to see if the bill is working. I must say that the landlord lobby has been doing everything they can to the real effectiveness of this bill, but we urge you to support it. As I say, I'm cautious, but we want the bill to move. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Hey, Mike.
Greg, Greg Ning, Ng. Greg Ng?
Next.
Michelle Niedermeyer. Commenting 190106.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Niedermeyer, and I'm a resident of West Philadelphia. For 20 years, I have worked as an educator for the Pennsylvania Integrated Pest Management Program out of the Department of Entomology at Penn State University. We work with individuals and communities to share knowledge about pest management practices to effectively and safely manage pests, and we regularly respond to questions and concerns about bedbugs from Philadelphians throughout the city. Bedbugs are hitchhikers. They contribute to physical and mental health issues, and bedbugs are structural pests. Philadelphia housing is 92% connected, dominated by row houses and multifamily housing units. With a median age of 93 years, it is often structurally deficient, making a perfect storm for bedbugs to easily move from one unit to another and for infestations to continue to persist seemingly undetected for months or even years. The bill before you does not fully consider, consider current pest management practices for bedbug remediation, meaning it ignores some of the common and critical tools and tactics that have been shown to be efficacious and cost-saving. Several amendments to the bill go against what is factually known about bedbug biology and remediation. Setting arbitrary time limits and having unclear language for sharing of costs and tenant landlord situations is counter to a successful program, and based on peer-reviewed and published research may actually lead to bedbugs continuing to spread, to growing infestations, and to increasing costs of remediation for tenants, landlords, and all Philadelphians. We don't need to reinvent the wheel to solve this problem. There is a solution that can help rid Philadelphia of bedbugs. It includes prompt reporting by residents of suspected or confirmed bedbugs, an integrated pest management approach using tools and tactics such as mattress and box spring encasements, and monitoring devices such as interceptors, and for owners to be responsible for the cost of bedbug remediation. We can easily follow current pest management practices and the successful implementation of protocols in other cities such as Chicago, New York, and even Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Bedbugs are no one's fault. No one wants bedbugs. I cautiously support this bill with reservations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
Dan Hyman. Commenting on 190106.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Hyman. I'm a staff attorney at Senior Law Center. Senior Law Center will protect the rights of older Pennsylvanians. We provide free legal assistance to thousands of seniors each year, including victims of elder abuse and financial exploitations, elders facing housing crises and homelessness, and grandparents raising grandchildren. In our work, we assist seniors facing poor housing conditions, including infestations of bedbugs. Seniors find it especially difficult to notice bedbug infestations. They may not be able to see the signs of infestations. They're less likely to react to the bites. Elders who are bitten often will not show red marks or welts. In our practice, we have seen this happen repeatedly. We understand that the bill has been amended to require tenants to share the cost of remediation if they do not report an infestation to their landlord within a year of when they move in, or 180 days of when another unit discovers an infestation. As such, seniors may not notice the infestation within the timeframe established by the amended bill, and so may have to pay to exterminate infestations that exist prior to their test, to their tenancy or caused by other tenants and other units. We're concerned that seniors who simply do not notice infestations until too late will either not report infestations, leading them, to them spreading, or be severely financially penalized if they do not report the infestations. Bedbugs are a public health risk that impacts the older people we are proud to serve, our veterans, our grandparents, those who fought, built and fought for this country and the rights and opportunities we enjoy today. As such, despite our reservations about tenants being burdened with a portion of the cost of extermination, we urge you to pass the bill. We continue to believe that a bill that does not pass costs onto tenants would be better for the residents of Philadelphia.
Thank you for your testimony.
Maureen May. Commenting on 190788.
Thank you. My name is Maureen May, and I am the president of the Pennsylvania Association of Staff Nurses and Allied Professionals. I presently work at Temple University Hospital and have worked at the bedside taking care of patients for 36 years. I am proud to work in the most honest and the most trusted profession in this country. I speak on behalf of I speak on behalf of over four thousand members of PASNAP that work in Philadelphia. We represent nurses at Temple Hospital, Einstein, St. Christopher's Hospital, Will's Eye, Jean's Hospital, and the Technical and Professional, 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 excuse me, at Temple. And until this summer, we also represented the nurses at Honeman University Hospital. The closure of Honeman, a Level One Trauma Center, was disorderly undone without due regard for patient care. The result of Honeman's closure has been higher acuity and volume in the emergency departments across the city. A 2014 Health Affairs Journal found the emergency closures in California hospital closures, it led to an increase of mortality and morbidity of five percent in the area surrounding those departments that closed. Another study in 2014 of hospital closures in the Journal of Acute Care Medicine found that, quote, "The odds of inpatient mortality increased by twenty-one percent in trauma patients who experienced an increased drive time to their nearest trauma center as a result of this closure." Closure of Honeman is just one of, Honeman was just one of five hospitals in Philadelphia with maternal health departments, and we know this will have concrete impacts on infant mortality. And the most striking study is a 2012 study where the health researchers found that infant mortality increased by fifty percent during that area when nine out of the nineteen hospitals, yes, nine out of nineteen hospitals in Philadelphia closed, a fifty percent in infant mortality. I work in direct care, and I know I am experiencing this firsthand at Temple University Hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
David Berry. Commenting on 190638.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. David Berg, commenting on 190638. I am a stakeholder in the Garden Court Plaza, a thirteen-story building located on Forty-seventh and Pine. 190638 is a bill that correctly, that corrects the inaccurate zoning in the Garden Court submarket of West Philadelphia. The bill currently upzones property that are not zoned accurately, such as various multi-story condo buildings that are currently zoned single-family houses. It also correctly downzones single-family houses, so they will not be demolished, thereby protecting the character of the neighborhood. The block of Forty-seventh and Forty-eighth between Spruce and Pine is inaccurately zoned CMX-2, which is clearly evidenced by the fact that there's a thirteen-story building on the corner of it. The block is currently excluded from the bill without reason. CMX-2 promotes big-box retail and does not have a parking requirement, whereas CMX-3 will promote multifamily development, affordable housing, and senior amenities that are badly needed in the neighborhood, as well as required parking. Further, other than the residents that live in the historic thirteen-story tower, no residents will be displaced at all by rezoning this block CMX-3. Alternatively, housing will be created to serve the community. I'm here to request a friendly amendment to my otherwise supportive of the bill to properly and accurately rezone the block of Forty-seventh and Forty-eighth between Pine and Spruce to CMX-3. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Michael Phillips. Commenting on 190638.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. Michael Phillips, I'm an attorney here on behalf of both the equitable owner and the owner, Good Shepherd Church, located at 314 South Forty-Sixth Street. While we appreciate the corrective nature of the proposed map, the inclusion of the Good Shepherd Church at 314 South Forty-Sixth Street within the RTA-1 designation is not corrective and would impede the adaptive reuse and preservation of the church. While all the twins along the three-hundred block of South Forty-Sixth Street were correctively rezoned as RTA-1, the church was also included in that designation. We believe that is not corrective. 314 South Forty-Sixth should be included within the adjacent RM1 multifamily classification to permit the adaptive reuse of the church with the additional benefit of creating affordable housing. The adaptive reuse as multifamily is supported by Garden Court Community Association, the Preservation Alliance, University City Historical Society, and dozens of neighbors throughout the community who have signed petitions of support. We respectively urge that the proposed map be amended to correctly amend the zoning maps to reflect an RM1 designation for 314 South Forty-Sixth Street, the Good Shepherd Church, to permit the adaptive reuse of the church and the preservation of the church. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Mick Cooh. Mick Cooh.
Next name.
Dionne Lerman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. I'm commenting on Bill 190106. Good afternoon, distinguished members of city council. I am Dionne Lerman, a Chestnut Hill resident, and for the last twelve years, a Philadelphia educator for the Pennsylvania Integrated Pest Management Program. I am a licensed pesticide applicator and an associate certified entomologist. Most of my work involves bedbugs. I attend scientific and industry forums on bedbugs, and I use their research to conduct evidence-based training to residents, social service providers, property managers and facility staff, and pest management professionals. I would like to speak to the difficulty of identifying bedbug infestations. Dr. Chang Lu Wong of Rutgers University has conducted years of research in multifamily housing. He inspects all units in a building and consistently discovers about three times as many infestations as management knew about. About half the time, even the residents were unaware of the bedbugs. This is easy to understand. Bedbugs are very small, from the size of a poppy seed to the size of an apple seed. Seventy percent of any infestation are juveniles. That is tiny. Bedbug populations grow slowly, with egg to adult taking sixty to ninety days. About eighty percent of the infestations identified by Dr. Wong's team contain less than fifty bedbugs. Less than ten percent had more than one hundred bugs. By the time most people realize they have bugs, they have probably had them three to six months. Property managers who rely on tenant reports will never get, bring them under control. This is called chasing the bugs from apartment to apartment, and it is frustrating and expensive. This is why the time windows for tenants to report bedbugs in Section Three of the bill have been extended. They were totally inadequate. Most tenants will not be aware of bedbug infestations until well over ninety days. Once bedbugs are established in a building, they will continue to disperse and spread. If residents are penalized by the cost shifting of treatment from the property owners to the tenants, residents will avoid reporting infestations, and bedbug problems will expand uncontrolled. It is in everyone's interest to encourage resident reporting and for owners to accept their responsibility for pest control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 190947, 190953, 190955, 190948, 190954, and 190956.
This is an official decree of the people, and read man damnous quo larto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably unlawfully. Can an oath violating official sit at their family Thanksgiving table, proud of their accomplishments? Can a unanimously voting official return to work, look me dead in the eye with a smirk, and ask, "How was your Thanksgiving?" I was not raped by Sandusky, Dr. Nazar, or my parish priest, but my repeated victimization is still the same. If officials, families, and friends knew what these officials did, would they be welcome at any Thanksgiving table? If officials lie to God while taking their oath, why is there no prosecution? The Constitution's require immediate remedies, breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C. 98-2, 98-3, 98-5, 98-6, 98-7, eighteen U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article One, Sections One through Twenty-eight, Twenty-sixth, P.A., CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, to denial of God-given forty-two U.S.C. 98-2 property rights for twenty-five years, this egregious extraordinary oath filing, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, law be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, as I do every week for over five years, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monumental corruption.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel.
Hulan Lo. Commenting on 190950.
My name is Hulan Lo. I write the wrong number. It should be 190638. And I'm the owner of property on Forty-Sixth Street, the address is 320, and right next to the church. I'm strongly not a, not like to see the multifamily building more and more around my property, because it's caused a lot of parking and traffic issue. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Mary McGedigan. Commenting on 190638.
My name is Mary McGedigan. I reside at 4533 Pine Street in the Garden Court area. I represent the RCO West Philadelphians for Progressive Planning and Preservation. Now, we supported this bill in its previous version, but strongly opposed the request to single out the Good Shepherd Community Church property for upzoning to RM1 through an amendment to this legislation. Lacking a hardship condition, or indeed any strong argument for their proposal to demolish part of the church and place a second building in the small front garden entrance, the developers' chances of success at the ZBA were slim. So they engaged with us in discussions, attempting to find a solution that would be acceptable to all parties. This involved numerous concessions from the neighbors, including the acceptance of apartments in a single-family district, and a willingness to forego any parking spaces whatsoever in a neighborhood that is now inundated with new construction, that is multifamily, buildings only, and where a shortage of parking is a growing problem. These were substantial concessions and evidence of good faith on our part. The negotiations ceased, however, and we learned that the developer had decided to subvert the usual process of seeking variances from the ZBA by requesting that the councilwoman upzone the property through legislative action. We object strongly to this attempt by the developer to shut the community out of the process. The neighbors have a right to weigh in on any variances that owners might request, and this backdoor maneuver is intended to deny them that right. Developers and owners should not be allowed to dictate what the zoning will be for their properties. To permit this is fundamentally unfair, undermines the accepted zoning relief process, and encourages the belief that zoning decisions depend solely on access to money and the powerful. Councilwoman Blackwell, I'm not young anymore. A Blackwell has been, ever since I've been a voter, Blackwell has been my district councilperson. So you have a long legacy, you and Lucian, of listening to the community. So I'm asking you, please, don't betray that legacy at this point. Deny this amendment, withdraw it, and listen to the community, not to the profit-seeking developers. Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Ross Hoffman. Commenting on 190638.
Hi there. My name is Ross Hoffman. I live nearby the church building in Spruce Hill, and I just want to add my voice in opposition to this proposed amendment for the reasons that Mary and others have said. And I just want to disagree with the characterization of this proposed upzoning as corrective. I think that the correct zoning really should probably be institutional, but I just want to say that the church building as is is of great value to the community and the neighborhood, that there's a need for buildings like this, not just for their historic value, but for their potential use as community gathering spaces. And it would be, I think, a shame and a great loss to the neighborhood to see the building go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Louis Baum. Commenting on 190638.
My name is Louis Baum. I've been a homeowner in the Garden Court area for thirty-nine years. I'm a member of the Forty-Sixth Ward Democratic RCO and a past treasurer of Cedar Park Neighbors. I come before you today in support of several downzoning, remapping bills, but in particular, the downzoning portion of 190638, but against the upzoning portion therein. This fall, I gathered signatures in my neighborhood for a petition asking the downzoning of improperly-zoned single-family residential areas, and asking to delete the upzoning of those properties in the Spruce Street corridor. Most residents I visited were unaware of either issue, even those living in single-family homes that are incorrectly zoned RM1 multifamily and are at risk. When predominantly single-family blocks are incorrectly zoned, it allows the possibility of maximal buyright construction that will increase density with all the intended risks. The request of downzoning simply aligns with the way the neighborhoods were built and how the buildings are being used today. Many people I spoke with recognize the need for affordable housing. Proper zoning does not foreclose the repurposing of land and buildings, but it does provide an opportunity for timely and meaningful community input via the zoning variance process. Most people I spoke with also did not know about the proposed upzoning. Upzoning for development projects short-circuits the variance process, the main vehicle by which residents can learn about and input to proposed projects on a somewhat level playing field. There are those who want to impose dreams of aggrandizement and profit on our communities. Others want to impose utopian dreams of the correct urban life. There are probably dreams of a higher tax base. We will be working to raise awareness and empowerment of the residents who have already invested in our neighborhoods, homeowners and renters alike who do not need or want the imposition of someone else's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next speaker, please.
Destiny Jackson. Commenting on 190804 and 180457.
Hello, my name is Destiny Jackson. I'm sixteen years old. I'm from West Philadelphia and a student of Belmont Charter High School, and I am part of the Advocacy Institute's Real Talk Tobacco Program. I would like to speak, I would like to thank Council President Clark and the city council for allowing me to speak today. I would like to thank you, the city council, for protecting the youth in Philadelphia from flavored e-cigarettes and cigars, or what I call raps. The tobacco industry has been targeting communities, including youth and the black community, for decades, especially here in Philadelphia. For this reason, I thank you for including the menthol mint flavor in this bill so that my community does not continue to be targeted. Technology has improved and has grown so big to the point where we have e-cigarettes and vaping. It's even worse when you're on social media and you see another story of a teen's death from e-cigarettes. That could have been one of us. Have you noticed that e-cigarette companies have claimed that they exist to help adults stop smoking? stop smoking, but have targeted youth like me? I see my friends smoking wraps such as Dutch, Black &amp; Mild, and BLK. These are flavored tobacco products like vanilla, chocolate, and grape, and have a sweet smell. It is sad when I'm with my friends and everyone is smoking, and I try to tell them to stop, but they claim that they are trying. It's so bad that it becomes an addiction. One Juul pod has the same amount of nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. These flavors are addicting my generation to nicotine. These flavors are distracting people from school, which they have trouble with focusing, like many youth experience today. The bathrooms are closed in my school. This bill would definitely make a change in Philadelphia. If youth cannot access flavored tobacco products and they cannot see it, then they will not be able to get it easily. If we pass this policy, we could help our future leaders before they are destroyed and save generations to come.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Cleveland Best. And if I could remind everybody to try to keep it within the two-minute mark for public comment, and if you do have written testimony, feel free to bring it up front to our sergeant of arms, and we'll make sure it is reflected so in our record. You may state your name for the record and begin with that.
My name is Cleveland Best, and I'm here to speak about bill number 190638. I represent the Good Shepherd Community Church. My father started the church over 40 years ago, and when we first moved into the area, the community embraced us, and then over a certain amount of time, the community changed, different people moved in, and all of a sudden, the whole community changed. And when we were trying to have service, they would call the police that the music was too loud, or we would double-park to let the senior citizens out, and they would call the police for us double-parking in the street. And doing that, of course, our membership went down, and now we're not able to really keep up the church like we need to. Now, I've heard a lot of people come up and say that they've had community meetings at the church and different things, but that's untrue. We haven't had any meetings at the church with any community other than talking about the specifics of the church, of us selling it. Now, we have different people that I've seen come up that I've never seen ever attend the church, not one time, but now they don't want us in the community anymore, but soon as we're getting ready to sell the church, now they don't want us to leave. So they're further antagonizing us about the church. We've been going through this for over a year's time now, and we've had different meetings with the community about the church. And the developer had made several changes, and still, certain people are not happy with that, but one thing we were glad about is that they're not going to tear down the church. They're going to leave the structure of the church up. And not only that, they're going to have affordable housing there with the addition that they're putting on to the church. So that was very important to us, that the church be in the same form that it is now. So we just want to thank the people that came in and helping us with the church to keep, to maintain it in the structure that it is now, and hope that this goes through so we can move on to another location. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Logan Weld. Commenting on 190610.
Logan Weldy, Clean Air Council. I am asking you to vote yes on the amendment to bill 190610, but would strongly encourage that a fee component is necessary for all bags. We are creating too much waste. An increasing amount of this waste is plastic, and it's invading all aspects of our lives. It's in our parks, streets, storm drains, and our food. Humans are now consuming a credit card amount of plastic every week. 90% of our table salt has plastic. 100% of our fecal matter contains plastic. We're poisoning ourselves and our environment with plastics. We used to not rely on plastic bags. People brought their own, and it worked efficiently. Stores purchasing bags for customers is convenient, but tremendously inefficient, and by no means are these bags free for consumers or taxpayers. Trucks pile into our city, delivering the roughly $1 billion single-use bags every year. They contribute to our high asthma rates, create air pollution, snarl traffic, disrupt our daily commutes, decrease productivity, and destroy our roads, causing costly repairs. Retailers must pass these costs on to the consumer, just like all overhead costs. These bags are included in the cost of goods sold, and it's the city's turn to pick up the cost of the supposedly free bags. For example, one single plastic bag could set the water department back thousands of dollars if it gets caught in a storm drain. $1 billion single-use bags cost the city between $9 and $12 million per year, and each consumer spends over $30 per year on these "free" bags, as they are embedded in their everyday purchases. So it's hugely misleading and factually inaccurate to claim these bags are free. The costs are on retailers, consumers, the city, and on our environment. The most efficient way to deal with this is to put a fee on bags, let the consumer make their market-driven and informed decision. Every study has shown that when a consumer makes the choice of to pay for a bag or not, they don't take a bag or they bring their own. Considering that 80% of our purchases are for three items less, this seems like common sense. I know all of you worry about low-income residents and the city, as I do. We need to start cleaning the city up and relieve the overwhelming burden on our low-income residents. Our neighborhoods are trashed. We are a filthy city, and we must confront this. We're spending millions of dollars a year on bags. A recent study showed that neighborhoods, when they're relieved of litter, are greened. They reduce crime rates by 10% and a 30% drop in gun violence. Neighborhoods also experience drastic decrease in reported depression and higher property values. Legislation that encourages customers to reduce their usage saves businesses tens of millions of dollars, ultimately saves customers money. You will be cleaning up communities, lessening air pollution, lessening congestion on city streets and street repairs, and saving the city millions of dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Joey Mondesire. Commenting on 190958.
Joey Mondesire, 190598. Renaming the portion of Germantown Avenue 6600 block on behalf of my dad, Jerome Wyatt Mondesire. For me, it's not a question of why, it's more of a question of why not? Why not let the people of that neighborhood be reminded daily of who invested in that block in particular, starting in the year 2000, and continue to invest in that block to this day, if he was still here? But his fiancee, at the time of his passing, and myself, his son, continued that investment. Unfortunately, we're not occupying the building that my father originally acquired, but we are very short distance away, and that neighborhood means more than everything to us. I've been raised there. I still have my family there to this day, and I'm going to continue to be invested in that neighborhood and that block in particular. So I would greatly appreciate if this was passed. I thank you for even taking the time to consider this, and you all have continued to invest in my family as a city and as a council, and I really thank you, I can't thank you all enough. And again, I hope this bill is passed.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Kathy Hicks. Commenting on 190958.
Catherine Hicks. Good afternoon, Council President, council members, staff, and all who are here in attendance. It's an honor to be here today, and I want to thank Councilwoman Cindy Bass for introducing the resolution 190598 to rename the 6600 block of Germantown Avenue J. Wyatt Mondesire Way. And I also thank Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown and all who co-sign for this resolution. This would truly be a great honor for the city and the legacy of Jerry Mondesire, who fought hard and tirelessly for a social justice for all citizens, but especially for the minority community. Using his voice through his newspaper, the Philadelphia Sunday-Sun, which myself and his son Joseph now continue to run, through his weekly radio program and as a panelist on Channel 6's Inside Story, and through his leadership as president of the state and local chapter of the Philadelphia NAACP. I would hope that this resolution receives a unanimous vote of yes in honor of Jerry's memory and all he did for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Rochelle Bilal.
Commenting on 190958.
Good afternoon, council. Speaking on 190958. This resolution in support of J. Wyatt Mondesire, oh, for the record, Rochelle Bilal. And for the record, this is probably will be my last time speaking on this side of the fence on anything, and I proudly stand here and speak in support of J. Wyatt Mondesire. So for this, I'm here today stating that I support this resolution, and I urge everybody else to support this resolution. J. Wyatt Mondesire was not only just the owner of a business, but he was a renegade, and he fought for people. Look at some of his accomplishments. He got felons to be able to vote in the state of Pennsylvania. He fought against gun violence, dealt with Marcus Yates, started the biggest march in this city against shootings in our neighborhood. He stood for a whole lot. You may not have liked him, you may not have loved him as much as most of us have, but I've worked with Jerry Mondesire as the secretary to Philadelphia Branch of the NAACP since 2004. And we all did not get along, but what we did was the work of the people. So I'm urging all city council and everybody to join in in supporting this resolution on a street named in his name so that everybody remembered the hard work and the sacrifices he has done in this city. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Giuliano Pignatoro. Commenting on 190638.
Hello, my name is Giuliano Pignatoro. Thank you. I'm here, as he says, speaking on 190638. I am an owner and the manager of Garden Court Plaza Apartments at 4701 Pine Street. Generally speaking, I believe in the intent of this bill. I was not there, but my understanding is that members of the Garden Court Community Association, along with city planning, took on an exhaustive effort to correctly remap their entire neighborhood. This means surveying to figure out which blocks are actually single-family but are zoned for multifamily or commercial uses, vice versa, and various combinations thereof. This effort is to be applauded. Historic neighborhood and parcels with historic buildings and historic uses are generally older than the code. They should be correctly zoned for their uses, sizes, and shapes. On September 12th, Councilmember Blackwell introduced this remapping bill as conceived by city planning and supported by the Garden Court Association Zoning Committee. The bill that was first read on November 21st looks largely like what was introduced in September. It correctly remaps almost the entire neighborhood with one exception, the block on which Garden Court Plaza Apartments sits. On a 90,000-square-foot parcel, this building is home to around 140 families. It's over 150 feet tall, it has 11 retail spaces, and a 270-parking-spot garage. Unlike all of its neighbors and the rest of the neighborhood, the block it sits on was amended since the bill's original introduction to be CMX2, effectively spotzoning this one city square so that its use, size, and shape is the only one left not in compliance with the underlying zoning. I respectfully request, would welcome, and would support an amendment putting our square back to CMX3 as originally proposed. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Katherine Blunt. Commenting on 190638.
My name is Katherine Blunt. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of city council. As a community member, a member of the 46th Ward RCO, and an advocate for learning about zoning and its impact on the types of community development that can happen by right, I have come to two conclusions. Support correct zoning, as it applies to save zoning, or protecting homeowners and residents living in red designated residential multifamily districts. Originally, these were, and still are, single-family homes within neighborhoods subjected to hideous and poorly constructed development granted to developers by right. I do not support upzoning, for whatever reason, that denies the community's participation as a matter of right as it is provided for and by the zoning variance process. I applaud Garden Court Communities Association's correct zoning of its single-family residential homes, which had been upzoned or designated multifamily properties perhaps in the city's 2012 rezoning. But I cannot support the upzoning or designation of Spruce Street from 46 to 48, or 46th Street between Spruce and Pine, or Pine between 46 to 48, and along 49th Street between Spruce and Pine Streets. This upzoning through a remapping process circumvents community participation in the present while it provides by right forevermore advantages to developers in the present and throughout the future. So I say, let's save the good parts and amend the bad parts out. Additionally, I believe it would be better served for all upzoning to go to the zoning variance process. The same is true for the Good Shepherd Church. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Jacob Roche. Jacob Rosk. Rodney Mohammed. Commenting on 190958.
Yes. Thank you, council. Yes, commenting on 190958, renaming of 6600 block, Germantown Avenue there, J. Wyatt Mondesire Way. Just wanted to add in of the great things that have already been said. You know, in 1995, after the unprecedented historic Million Man March, J. Wyatt Mondesire came to me, and he was inspired to run for president of the Philadelphia NAACP. He's the only reason I became a member of the NAACP. Proud to serve under him. One of the earliest battles I can remember we had was against Texaco, a very large corporation. He got the city council at that time to divest $5.7 million from city pension that was invested in Texaco. Philadelphia Gas Works had 44% of their contracts with Texaco's 7,000 gas wells. He got PGW to begin to agree to discontinue that contract, and of course, Jerry then got a call from Texaco. Eventually, a deal was made. We went on when Fahim Thomas was killed. J. Wyatt Mondesire led us to have one of the largest demonstrations against gun violence that I've known this city to have. He defended Judge Messiah Jackson when then District Attorney Lynn Abraham and them were trying to derail her going to be a president judge. He influenced so much, I just want to say that in addition to being our fearless president for 17 years, founder of the Philadelphia Sunday-Sun, he was also for years chief of staff of one of the most consummate legislators and congressmen that this country has known, William Gray III. And right now, Bill Gray's name is on the 30th Street Station. I say the least we can do for J. Wyatt Mondesire is have a street named after him. And so I urge city council to unanimously vote to name that street J. Wyatt Mondesire Way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please. Mino Ravel.
Yeah, hi, my name's Mino Ravel. I'll keep it short. I'm speaking on bill number 190610. We need to stop using single-use plastics. The first on our list should be the easiest, single-use shopping bags. After that, we have a long list, so let's get past the bags first, because they're all made from fossil fuels, something we must stop extracting, transporting, consuming, and then throwing away to pollute our waterways. My morning feed today had two headlines on the subject. One, most Americans would pay more to avoid using plastics, at a poll published on PBS. Two, Aldi is set to replace single-use plastic bags with compostable bags. The world is ready to move away from single-use plastics. As a city, we need to begin our As a city, we need to begin our transition away from single-use plastics, beginning with these bags. Let's do this with a ban and a fee, as Logan said. I'd also like to speak on bill 190944, the abatement of, the abatement of the tax abatement on new construction. I'm personally with Ms. Gimm on ending the tax abatement completely. I realize that you want to ease the burden on developers and new homeowners, and if we must give away money, if we must give away money, let's do so with a climate lens. Perhaps we only offer an abatement to developers that build to a net zero energy standard, meaning that the building has no emissions during its operations for heating, cooling, and other power needs. This is just one example of how we incentivize energy efficiency. I myself live in a rehab row home that could be considered a net zero energy building. Doing so would make the space more affordable, since there would be no ongoing fuel costs. Doing so would also achieve other goals that we have committed to, such as our climate goals of transitioning to renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Christopher Smith.
My name is Christopher Mahia Smith. I'm a resident of the 4900 Block of Pine and on the executive board of the Garden Court Community Association. So we've been hearing the words Garden Court a lot today in this hearing. It's probably the most anybody in this room has ever heard that neighborhood before. You'd think we were Fishtown or something. The development boom hasn't hit our neighborhood, but it will. And the problem is, is when you have bad zoning, you get bad development. And so that's what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to set the rules of the road for future development. Garden Court built on the community outreach that city planning did under the 2035 initiative, which earned them national awards for community outreach. We built on that effort and further reached out to our community to understand what are their values and what do they want to see for their community. We're taking all of that feedback and we're going to enshrine it in the law. There's more than one way for community voice to be manifested. It's not just simply in a reactive stance to when a project is proposed, and then we shave along the edges and try to make it a little marginally better. Instead, if we have the right zoning, if we say, we want development here, we don't want it here. That puts us in a much stronger place and it allows our community to thrive. Our community has said that they want vibrant commercial corridors that consider parking. They've said they want our neighborhood to be accessible to a broad range of socioeconomic diversity. That's what will happen if we effectively, proactively update the zoning of Garden Court. That being said, there are two amendments that need to happen in order to achieve this vision. One, the 4700 Block between Spruce and Pine needs to move back to the zoning category as originally submitted, CMX3. As people have testified earlier, it would allow the facilitation of affordable housing, senior amenities, and other good outcomes of investment. The current category would result in bad investment, in bad development. The second is the Good Shepherd Church. By correctly zoning it to RM1, the church will be saved and will not be demolished. The church will be saved and not demolished. The church will be saved and not demolished. If we get these two amendments, the bill should proceed. If these two amendments do not happen, the bill should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, our next speaker.
Natalie Vogel Howard.
I'm Natalie Howard, Director of Communications for the Mutter Museum of the College of Physicians of Philadelphia. On behalf of my colleagues at the Mutter, I'd like to thank Councilmember Taubenberger for introducing the resolution recognizing the Mutter Museum's ambitious exhibition detailing the size, scope, and impact of the influenza pandemic of 1918 in Philadelphia and its historically significant research on this topic. This pandemic killed over 17,000 Philadelphians and impacted many families in every corner of our city. Despite this, much of the tragic event has been left out of the history books. This resolution would honor the forgotten victims and help us to remember this important health crisis in order to prevent future pandemics in our city. We encourage all Philadelphians to visit our exhibition to learn more about the history of our city and honor the victims of the 1918 flu. Thank you, Councilman Taubenberger, for your leadership on this topic, for recognizing the Mutter Museum's work, and for introducing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Anna Kostic.
Anna Kostic has briefly stepped out to answer the call of nature. I think since she's been here since 9:30 this morning, that perhaps you could show a little forbearance and wait for her to return. Thank you.
Mr. Decker, our next speaker.
Jerry Carr.
Good afternoon, councilpeople, and thank you for allowing me to speak. If I can, if possible, can I chime in on the resolution for Jerome Montesir? I met him, he interviewed me, very nice guy, had a personal relationship with him. I didn't know I was coming here to speak, but it's okay if I... Okay, thank you. My name is Jerry Carr, and I'm here on behalf of my late wife, that's the small word, great woman. We set out to do something on Market Street, it happened, and it's still happening. Pleasure to meet you. Had the pleasure to meet Councilman Jones. A lot of you guys I see from a distance, some of them I see up close. I used to ride the elevator with Mark Squilla, see Derrick Green at the ward meeting, so I've been around, but I've never had the privilege to come down here and speak and really interact and see what council was about, and I'm glad I did, so thank you. And please consider that small token for me. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Caputo. Commenting on 190638.
My name's Larry Caputo. I live at 4533 Pine Street in West Philadelphia. At the start of this process to remap our neighborhood, Councilwoman, you promised us you would listen to the community, to do what the community asked. The community is overwhelmingly opposed to the amendment to upzone Good Shepherd Church. Overwhelmingly. Hundreds of signatures have been placed on petitions to not upzone, to keep the church in place without drastically overdeveloping it. We've worked hard with the proposed new owners. We've proposed adaptive reuse apartments. We've even proposed an overbuild to add more space. Just don't change the character of our neighborhood. That's all that we ask. The Garden Court Community Association Board voted against this, this change. The West Philadelphians Community Group has opposed it. Every single owner of the entire block where the property sits opposes it. And unlike some of the information that's been proposed here, the building will not be demolished. No one is for demolition of the church. And we just want to see the church persist, even have the church assembly persist if they would like. So that's our position, just to keep development in check and allow the community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker.
Anna Kostic. Commenting on 190638.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems I missed it in a, I blinked, but now I am again here. Thank you. My name is Gordana Anna Kostic. I live at, I'm here about 190630? A little closer? Okay. So 190638. And a particular portion of that bill, while I don't, do not oppose or disagree on that, I can talk only personally, for the Garden Court, Garden Court High Rise Apartments' upzoning, but the Good Shepherd Church, of course, is something that we strongly oppose. All the neighbors, I live at 321 South 46th Street, that is exactly across from the church. Every single one of owner, except for one who is non-opposed for the reason of avoiding aggravation, is very strongly opposed for the reasons that, most of the reasons you already heard. What is of interest, particular interest for me is when we talk about correct zoning or, you know, having it up to date, then we do need to recognize that some of the buildings, like the religious buildings, like, you know, other public buildings, and the church would also, of course, call into religions buildings, whatever denomination, whether it's a synagogue, it's a temple, our libraries, our schools, our hospitals, are public buildings. They're usually singular, they're unique, they cannot be just blanketed to whatever around it is. So the church is definitely not to be exchanged for multi-units. One of the reasons of these special buildings that we need, I'm an architect by profession, an urban planner, just so to clarify, and I am beeping here, but the church has a special design that, yes, we can have, we can have many units, but we can have units in anything. What we can use with a building that is built to have a special acoustics and stuff like that is something else. It's public building and it can be transferred into another public option if available, and it is available.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, is there anyone else to provide public comment?
There are none of the speakers in the public comment list, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing none, that will conclude today's public comment, period.
Okay. We're going to consider our consent agenda. Councilman, yes, Councilman Hina.
Prior to public comment, and I didn't want to interrupt, but I want to go on the record with calling up on second and final passage calendars today, two bills that were not read earlier. They are bill numbers 190610 and 190638.
All right, one second reading?
One second, second reading, fine.
All right. Thank you. Before we proceed, I'd like to acknowledge two of our newest members to our government family. I guess we have to call you Sheriff-elect Rochelle Bilal and Councilwoman-elect, I think she's over there behind the pole somewhere, Kathy Gilmore Richardson. Thank you, guys. All right, welcome. Get your paperwork signed up. Yeah, I tell you, not bad gigs, you know? Okay, we will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda, and after each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can now read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 190601A entitled in ordinance, submitting title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled zoning and planning, to provide certain provisions of Chapter 14200 and titled definitions in Chapter 14600 and titled use regulations by creating the use category smoking lounge. And bill number 180457 entitled in ordinance, submitting Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled service and other businesses, to add a new Section 9637 entitled sale of flavored tobacco products, prohibiting offering for sale and selling certain tobacco products other than cigarettes with characterizing flavors. And bill number 190787 entitled in ordinance, submitting Chapter 171400 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled non-competitively bid contracts, financial assistance, to provide for regulations and for special provisions for certain small dollar contracts. And bill number 190746 entitled in ordinance, submitting Section 91508 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled refunds and forgiveness for poverty income, to revise the tax rate. And bill number 190451 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Washington Avenue, 25th Street, Kimball Street, and 24th Street. And bill number 190718 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Upsall Street, Ardley Street, Washington Lane, Nacepta, Chestnut Hill, East Railroad Right Away, Chu Avenue, Washington Lane, and Morton Street. And bill number 190762 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 38th Street, Sansom Street, 39th Street, and Chestnut Street. And bill number 190763 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within the area bounded by 38th Street, Chestnut Street, 39th Street, and Ludlow Street. And bill number 190825 entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Sloan Street, Baring Street, State Street, and Palton Avenue. And bill number 190554 entitled in ordinance, amending, authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire pre simple title or a lesser interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise, and parcels of land generally bounded by South Street, the bulkhead line of the Schuylkill River, and Graves Ferry Avenue for public recreational purposes. And bill number 190710 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with 2401 Walnut for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 240401 Walnut Street. And bill number 190742 entitled in ordinance officially naming and designating the Cobbs Creek Recreation Center located at 280 Cobbs Creek Parkway in the city of Philadelphia as Johnny Sample Recreation Center. And bill number 190744 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property and the commissioner of parks and recreation to acquire from the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate to all or a portion of a parcel of land located in and about the area bounded by Monroe Street, Carpenter Street, South 17th Street, and South 18th Street, with any improvements thereon. And bill number 190827 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by West Thompson Street, North Orianna Street, West Gerardi Avenue, and North Fourth Street for further conveyance. And bill number 190862 entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with Mount Area Bethsaida Manor CDC for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 7800 O'Gonce Avenue. And bill number 190788 entitled in ordinance, submitting title 6 of the Philadelphia Code, the Health Code, to add a section establishing requirements for hospitals that anticipate closing. And bill number 190804 entitled in ordinance, submitting Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled service and other businesses, to add a new Section 9638 entitled sale of electronic smoking devices in youth accessible establishments, prohibiting selling and offering for sale certain electronic smoking devices in youth accessible establishments, and fixing penalties.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. To quest for each bill now, it shall the bill pass finally, Mr. Decker shall call a roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call a roll. Mr. Decker, please call a roll. Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye on all bills. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal is voting aye on all bills. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gennady Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark. Aye on all bills. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills on the consent agenda. The consent agenda, bills are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. And Mr. Decker, can you read the title of 190947?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 3rd Councilmanic District, which should be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190947 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190948.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3848 Mellon Street, located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, those opposed, ayes have it. 190948 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190949.
A resolution also naming the unit block of Edgewood Street as Destiny Smallwood Car Way in honor of Destiny Smallwood Carr to commemorate her longtime dedication and generous public service to her community.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190949 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190950.
A resolution also naming the 4600 block of Locust Street Livingston Way in honor of the legacy of Walter R. Livingston, his dedication to his community and the architectural imprint he has left on Philadelphia.
One more time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190950 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190952.
A resolution also naming the 1600 block of North 25th Street from Cecil B. Moore Avenue to West Oxford Street as Reverend Robert J. Lovett Sr. Way to honor the life and ministry of Reverend Robert J. Lovett Sr. and his special impact on the North Philadelphia community.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190952 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190953.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2760 North Ringgold Street, located in the 4th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190953 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190954.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District, which should be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Johnson, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190954 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190955.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to enter into a lease agreement with HACE for use by HACE of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Kiona Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190955 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190956.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190956 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190958.
A resolution renaming the 6600 block of Germantown Avenue Jay Wyatt Mondesire Way to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life and legacy of Jay Wyatt Jerry Mondesire for his dedication to social justice and political empowerment of Black and Brown communities in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution 190958 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190786A.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 17 1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled non-competitively bid contracts, financial assistance, by making revisions to definitions, to contract and reporting requirements, to exceptions, and to enforcement provisions, and making related changes to Section 2613 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Ethics Related Matters Incorporated as part of this chapter.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
I offer an amendment to Bill number 190786A, a copy of which has been circulated to all members of council. I move for its adoption.
All in favor said amendment. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190786A has been amended and will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190106.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 3 of Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, to add provisions relating to bedbug infestation, adding Chapter 9 4500 of the code, entitled responsibilities concerning bedbug infestations, to establish various requirements for landlords and tenants relating to bedbug infestation, and to establish requirements related to bedbugs in connection with certain residential occupancies and the sale of residential property.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number 190106. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190106 has been amended and will be on our final passes and second reading at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190610.
An ordinance submitting Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, by adding a new Chapter 9 4500 entitled prohibition on the use of certain bags and checkout bag charge, to permit the use of only certain bags by retail establishments at the point of sale or for a delivery.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number 190610. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190610 has been amended and will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190638.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cedar Avenue, 52nd Street, Locust Street, and 46th Street.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, hold on. You want to do that now? Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. During the course of today's council session, I learned that a member of my firm represents a party that has an equitable interest on this piece of legislation, and due to that, I will be recusing myself from all legislative actions on this matter.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell. We motion on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number 190638. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190638 has been amended and will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190784.
An ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning to provide for a height allowance for certain solar collectors.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Offer amendment to Bill number 190784. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of this amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190784 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190811.
An ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to provide certain provisions of subsection 14 507 entitled CDO, Central Delaware Riverfront Overlay District, to revise certain provisions of subsection 14 702 entitled floor area height and housing unit density bonuses.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer amendment to Bill number 190811. A copy of the amendments have been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190811 has been amended and will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190830.
An ordinance submitting Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to provide certain provisions of Section 14 500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by modifying the CTR, Center City Overlay District, Society Hill area to create additional standards concerning height, parking, signs, and special reviews.
Chair again recognizes actually Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number 190830. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190830 has been amended and will be placed in our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, I believe we have 190715.
An ordinance submitting Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code by creating a new Chapter 6 1200 entitled prescription data collection, to provide for submission of certain prescription data to the Department of Public Health solely for the purpose of administration and maintenance of the public health in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll. Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal is voting aye. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gennady Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark. Aye, the ayes are 16 and the nays are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190860.
An ordinance submitting Title 7 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Code by adding a new Chapter 7 200 entitled Preservation of Affordable Housing.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number 190860. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of this amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill number 190860 has been amended. It will be placed in our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the extraordinary contributions and tireless efforts of the current and former staff members of the Office of Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I'm sorry.
Introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Renee Chanel Pata on the release of her new film, In Our Right Mind: Alzheimer's and Other Dementias Impact on Communities of Color, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Rules to hold public hearings to investigate how departments coordinate with each other and with utilities to prepare and conduct street closures for street resurfacing and reconstruction projects, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Renegades Organization for their tireless pursuit in the mentorship of young men and assistance of senior citizens in communities across Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring John Grady on the occasion of his retirement as president and CEO of the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation for 21 years of outstanding service to the residents and businesses of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Joan Ernie on the occasion of her retirement as chief executive officer of Community Behavioral Health for her decades of service in the field of behavioral health, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Warren Pete Musser and his contributions to Philadelphia's business and philanthropic communities, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Taylor Fromm for her 27 years of exemplary leadership and service in the youth development field in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gim. Introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
May I get a second? Got a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the Mutter Museum's ambitious exhibition detailing the size, scope, and impact of the influenza pandemic in 1918, of 1918 in Philadelphia, and its historically significant research on the topic, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the 90th birthday of Ronald P. Sandmeyer Sr. and his dedication to the Sandmeyer Steel Company and Northeast Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing December 9, 2019 through December 13, 2019 as Army Week in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, I ask the Councilwoman Reynolds Brown to come to the lower podium as she makes her farewell speech. They didn't give you the script, Councilwoman? Come on up here.
I was expecting to honor the President's request. Doesn't matter what I was expecting. It has been said that the only constant in life is change. I have a dear friend who loves fancy fast cars. Somebody said, "Life is truly a ride. We're all strapped in and no one can stop it. When the doctor slaps our behind, she's ripping our ticket and away we go." As we make each passage from youth to adulthood to careers to maturity, sometimes we put our arms up and scream. Sometimes we just hang onto that bar in front of us. But the ride is the thing. I think the most we can hope for at the end of our careers is that our hair is messed up and we're out of breath and we didn't throw up, end quote. Speaking more spiritually, I'll lean on my mother's teachings, her favorite scripture and mine, Ecclesiastes 3 18. For everything there is a season and a time for every matter under heaven, a time to mourn and a time to dance, a time to keep silent and a time to speak. Just as the earth experiences spring, then summer... spring, then summer, fall, and finally winter, this afternoon I'll take a few minutes to speak about how our own career cycle has its seasons. Who we become, the young people we nurture, and the work we do in the spring and summertime of our careers contribute to the making of our harvest or our legacy. In the fall of our lives, we reap what we sow. I want to speak about the spring and summer seasons of my career. My mother would be disappointed if I didn't seize the moment to say thank you. Can't thank everybody in the universe. Time won't permit. I am going to highlight a couple of my proudest accomplishments and I will offer a few nuggets of advice to the class of 2020. And lastly, I will share with you my vision for my future. Thank you to our Mayor James F. Kenny, who was my colleague for 16 years on the Philadelphia City Council. We shared issues that we cared about and together co-sponsored major pieces of legislation, namely the Hate Crimes Bill and the LGBT Commission and others. To my islanders, Councilman Curtis Jones and Councilwoman Maria Canona Sanchez, we formed a special bond. It's been cultivated and it's lasted over 15 years. Thank you. To President Clark and members of this legislative body, we collectively share the belief that we're here on earth to do good for others. We get up every morning, determined to change the corner of the world we occupy. We believe that when smart people sit around the caucus table or president's table, we believe firmly that we can solve complex problems that are gripping our city. We accept the harsh reality that we can give our city the best we got and it'll never be enough, but we have to give the city the best we got anyway. Mother Teresa. Thank you to all of my colleagues. Know that I have valued you even when we disagreed. Having hard discussions is what we do well. Anyone can steer the ship, but it takes a real leader to chart the course. We're 17 members in this body that every day are trying to chart the course for our city. Nothing I can do, nothing I can say can be said without first acknowledging my mom. A widow at age 37, she was left to raise seven children alone. As the oldest, she taught me at age 22 that Blondell, it will never be about you. She made it clear that looking out for my siblings for me was never an option. It was required. Because of her values that she modeled, resilience, discipline, hard work, strength, and a very persuasive insistence, I would have made different career choices. All of you know my story about the Peace Corps when I wanted to not come back home because I'd signed up for the Peace Corps because I actually had a job. And I called home to tell my mother I won't be coming back home. I have my master's degree. I want to go to Africa and help children. That's what it was, a deadpan silence. My mother said, "Africa? You have three sisters in college and three siblings to go. Your Peace Corps will be right back here in Philadelphia." And so, as an obedient 23-year-old, I packed my bags and I came back home. Because her belief always was that education was our ticket out. And she expected me to help every single one of my siblings to graduate from college. She worked three jobs and I joined her scrubbing people's floors. Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez, for that bill. So in her absence, I have to acknowledge her by saying she taught me that you have to work hard every single day and expect no handouts from nobody. Thank you for my daughter, the joy of my life, because she picked up something called discipline and hard work. She just passed her second law school exam and she's home studying for contracts. To my sisters and my brothers, brother who is live streaming if my sisters are doing what I asked them to do. The gift I've had of my siblings is that they have been there and offered me tissues during those tough times, even while they remain completely perplexed that I would change my career choice to participate in the unforgiving world of electoral politics. To the village moms and girlfriends, thank you for the values and philosophy we shared in trying to be present for our and each other's children. You made parenting fun with a serious purpose. To many of my dear girlfriends who were here, Delta Sigma Theta girlfriends, travel crew, old school dance party, your unwavering support over the last 20 years is unmatched. To my staff, also known as my work family, two-thirds of whom were here today, while I am proud of my many legislative achievements, it is the devotion of each one of you that helped elevate our mission. As Jason Lewis, my former PR manager, said, and now a PR guru for a major marketing firm in the city, he used to say, "Councilwoman, you have a talent factory for young professionals." To my staff, I do hope that my actions have demonstrated my gratefulness for your sacrifices. To the audience assembled, a year ago, October to December 2018, I reckoned with the fact that life offers us choices. Every four years, each election for us as elected officials is a choice. After six months of self-reflection, introspection, a self-assessment of where I am, recognizing that my mother was gone for 28 months and my daughter had graduated 18 months at that time, I came to grips with the fact that it really is okay for me to continue to do public service and public policy even if I choose to contribute in other alternative ways, even if I decide to exit center stage and move to another arena. There have been lots of believers and comrades who cared about my success. First, to the visionary Mayor John F. Street and to those confidence around him who made a huge difference during my freshman term as a newcomer in this city council. To the comrade I started with, W. Wilson Good Jr., we shared an unshakable fidelity during our time together in city council. I remain eternally grateful to Wilson for his friendship and for his teachings. He remains my guru and godpost on the issue of leveling the playing field for business opportunities for MBEs and WBEs in our city. For those of you who may not know, Councilman Good passed 66 bills on one issue, diversity and inclusion. And so, I join you, Wilson. I join my colleagues in giving you the deepest respect for your brilliance in that space. Over the last 20 years, I have traveled and covered most of the 141 square miles of our city, from Old City in Councilman Squiller's district to Mantra, my home base, in Councilwoman Blackwell's district, to the Upper Roxboro and Winfield where I now live in Councilman Curtis Jones' district, to Chestnut Hill where I traveled during campaigns in Councilwoman Bass's district, to Fair Hill in Councilwoman Maria Canona's Sanchez district, both during and not during campaign times, and then to my soror, Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, the 50th Ward, where that ward leader gave me a chance. My staff and I have tried to honor my passion, seeking to help and uplift families and advocate for the underprivileged and those who are surviving on the edge of life. To those thousands of large and small contributors who've supported my five consecutive successful campaigns, and to the Old School Dance Party Steering Committee, led by my sister Pandora Woods. One year she raised $30,000 on a $30 ticket, took care of all of my expenses for Election Day. Note, in all of those races, I was always out-financed. Right, David? But one thing we all knew for sure, you cannot outwork Blondell Reynolds Brown. What a privilege it has been to serve those hundreds of thousands of citizens who praised and rewarded our good work. To African-American women who vote in higher numbers than any other voting block, thank you for always sharing and hearing my story. Thank you more for the recognition of my work product and my work ethic during a period of adversity. To my stakeholders and shareholders, my honorary kitchen cabinet, members of my kitchen cabinet who were here, George Burrell, David Hyman, David Ford, Hidgem Malumium, and my sister Pandora Woods who sat with me four times a year for 20 years offering advice. Thank you. To the handful of those new political allies that deepened your reach to me financially and emotionally during that rainy season, thank you for the umbrellas that you offered. You were the unexpected angels who looked at my heart, looked at my work product, and my value as a contributing member of city council. It was you, President Clark, and others, who looked beyond that rainy season and behind the news accounts, accepting that I too was not perfect, guiding me to take strategic steps towards rebuilding my campaign during the most challenging time of my career. President Clark, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, you never counted me out. The sunshine reappeared when I won my reelection in May 2015 handsomely. My mom has a sage, a lot of sage passages. And one of them, when I came in one day, and she said, "I am so glad. I don't hear your name on KYW anymore." And then she said, "Nothing good or bad lasts forever." Implicit in that passage is the notion that adversity is not the permanent condition of who we are. Life challenges are not supposed to paralyze us. Instead, they should be designed to teach us discernment. In fact, adversity is our greatest teacher. Therefore, we must realize that those who wrestle with us always will strengthen us and strengthen our nerves and better help us sharpen our skills. My mom reminded my siblings, me and now her grandchildren, that we learn from our victories. In fact, when we are pushed, tormented, make mistakes, feel defeated, we acquire greater knowledge because we know who we are and what we're made of. What's my lesson, Mr. President? Two lessons in that, from that experience for me. Helen Keller says it best, "Character cannot be developed in ease and quiet. Only through experience of trial and suffering can the soul be strengthened, ambition inspired, and success achieved," end quote. My interpretation, even in the desert, even the desert blooms after the storm. When you think of my work in city council and some of my greatest accomplishments, mention the Mayor's Commission for Women. Now, we're 32 cities in the country that had that. Mention the LGBTQ Commission. That was our work. Mention the Youth Commission. While we could feel satisfied with the work we have done, my still proudest legislative victory is the creation of the Children's Fund in my first year of my first term in city council. The coaching from Mayor John F. Street and George Burrell helped me craft a major provision of the Year 2000 Stadium legislation. That Children's Fund is now 15 years old. It's worth more than $60 million and will be in effect another 15, 15 years long after I leave city council on December 31st. As Councilwoman Sanchez used to say, dining out will never be the same in the city of Philadelphia. No one now can go to most restaurants without seeing the nutritional information. Now, I had some personal investment in that because, you know, I work, I wake up every day of the week, taking my weight and looking to see how many calories I can pack in before I see the LBSs. And what I know is that when we have the information on the front end, now science proves to us that we actually make different nutritional decisions. Councilman Jones will remember that it took us two years to find that nine votes, right? Out of that, we drew attention nationally and recognition from the White House when First Lady Michelle Obama came to speak about our bill once it was passed. What is my message to incoming council electors? Allow me to put my former teacher hat on and share some advice. Be advised that individuals do not get to eight votes alone. Build alliances. Insist on collaborations. Look for the win-win. Dismiss the or and seek the and. Right, Councilwoman Sanchez? Do not get stuck on stupid with your arrogance. Humility in your achievements is always more attractive. Secondly, recognize that campaigns like life are a constant daily audition. Make sure you are dressed for the audition. While we are not perfect human beings, we must remember that decency when disagreeing and the words you use do matter. If that were not so, it would not matter how we raise our children. Thirdly, I will caution all incoming members to remember that our city cannot function by the government structure alone. For Philadelphia to grow and thrive, we must recognize and have the sensibilities and the respect to value all of our sectors, including our business community. Even when we disagree, we, it's my personal opinion, we have to respect the role that they serve in our city. The relationship between our city government and business matters. And if that were not so, the recent tax abatement debate would not be. On a personal note, I'll say preserve and protect your families and choose to always be in the present for your children. Choose always to be in the present for your children, even when the press got a problem with that. I took my daughter to school myself from preschool to 12th grade every morning. And if someone called me while I had her in the car, she used to tell me, "Mommy, you would say, allow me to get back to you. I'm trying to spend a few minutes with my daughter." Live in the present with your children. My charge to this council is that we have lots of unfinished business. Tackle the still inequities that persist with MBE, WBEs in city contracts. I triple-checked my data yesterday to learn that as of May 2019, Philadelphia still has only a 2.5% rate for black-owned businesses. Continue to be an outspoken critic. Continue to be a broken record on any and all issues impacting women. Remind Neanderthals that women have the capacity, we have the breadth, and the depth to do the work required to break barriers. Continue to be a pathway for younger women to dream dreams and then encourage them to work hard to make those dreams come true. Wrap your arms around young women and young people. The rewards are immeasurable. I can testify. As I close, I found this passage from Napoleon Bonaparte, "Nothing is more difficult and therefore more precious than to be able to decide." The process a year ago was a lot of second guessing, a lot of serious soul-searching of who I am, where I am, and what time it is. My decision to step off the center stage for the 2019 election cycle allowed me to make this decision on my own terms. It was my choice to leave center stage and learn and grow in other ways. And while I know there's never a perfect time, it's the right time for me. At the end of the day, the myopic view of my life as viewed by others will not stand taller than the panoramic view I have for my future. I understand that the most plentiful commodity on earth is free advice, usually critical advice, and often hostile and uninformed advice. But I will dare to imagine a new chapter written by me, Blondell Reynolds Brown. The voices I hear and choose to follow belong to God and my inner spirit. I choose not to allow the fear of the shift stop me from making the shift. I did hear the different drummer of Henry David Thoreau's Metaphor. So while I've worked with exceptional professionals across government under multiple administration, my city council experience tells me that I can still do more on the outside because I have a sense of what's required and what the view looks like from the inside. Lastly, I thank God for the discernment and clarity as I weigh many factors in the preparation for my decision, which I, I haven't, I've had it multiple times, not the end of my career, just saying. But here's what I know. I do not want to be one of those women who's glad I did or one of those people who wished I had. The best inheritance I can leave my daughter Brielle and her cousins is an example of how to live a- leave my daughter Brielle and her cousins is an example of how to live a full and meaningful life. I want my daughter to tell her children, "Not only did her mother stand for something while serving 20 years, but with humility and hard work, I acted on it." Councilman Dom, you've heard me say this many times. I do not want to get to the end of my career or the end of my life and only have lived the length of it. I want to have lived the width of it as well. And it takes a little bit of courage to do that. Thank you, Mom. Therefore, come December 31, 2019, I will exit the stage of the Philadelphia City Council and start the fourth act or the fourth quarter for ballplayers who love football of my career. Remember, while summer was great, that time has passed. In the fall, the focus is less on doing and more on allowing and reaping the benefits of what we have sowed during the spring and summer seasons. These seasons will come and go many times throughout our lives, but we must learn to dance with them, yield to them, as uncomfortable and inconvenient as it might be. Come January 1, 2020, I expect to embrace a new season of my life with a grateful heart, and I'm looking forward to that new professional growth with optimism and hard work. And so, lastly and finally, in the words of my phenomenal, it's my personal opinion, an amazing girls' high school alum and my former chief of staff and the new councilwoman-elect Catherine Gilmore Richardson, the favorite expression in our office was, "We journey on." Let me hear it. "We journey on." Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I'd like to yield my speech to the majority and let my colleague have the last word.
Councilman Greenley, ditto. All right. Tough act to follow, huh? Yeah, I got you. All right. Well, Councilwoman, with that, you gotta go back to work. We gonna ask you to call for an adjournment.
Yes, yes, yes. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, December 12, 2019 at 10:00 a.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's been moved and second. The council stand adjourn until Thursday, December 12, 2019, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Most carries. Thank you all very much.